Forum. It is a vehicle to express your thoughts and dreams for our community. It is not a debate. To allow as much dialogue as possible and to be fair, I will adhere strictly to our time limits and our time keeper today is Randy Fox from A G C. Randy, there he is, front row. Now, he will give you candidates three signal cues as you're venturing into your talks. The first will be a 20-second cue. Hold that up high, Randy, so everyone in the audience can see it as well. We spent a lot of money on those. The second time cue will be your 10-second time cue, color-coded. And finally, when your time is up, you will see and possibly hear a tone that'll let you know that your time has expired and for us to move on. And you do not want to know what happens to you if you go longer than that. Randy's a union guy, you know what I'm saying? All right. Thank you, Randy, for helping us out today. And I feel candidates or audience members' behavior, if this disruptive, I will ask you to leave. And if I feel you are drifting off-topic, candidates, I reserve the right to interrupt and guide you back to the original question. And candidates may not interrupt another candidate while talking. Again, this is a forum, not a debate. And each candidate is to remain behind the table at all times. And to our distinguished -- I have to say these things, ladies and gentlemen. And to our distinguished audience members, you are not to applaud, to make noise, or to show support in any way of any of our candidates. And as mentioned, if you'd please silence your cellphones now, we'd appreciate it. So we have no distractions and we can absorb what the candidates are saying. And we will dedicate time in today's forum and our candidates to address some of your questions as time allows. So I hope you've had a chance to maybe fill out some of those three-by-five cards. If you haven't done so, we'd probably only be able to get to one or two of them, so we'll act as quickly as possible. Now, the order of today's opening and closing statements was determined by a straw draw of lots before today's forum. Closing statements will be in reverse order of our opening statements about to come. And all of today's candidates were given their first question and their official invitation to today's forum and have been instructed to incorporate their answer to that question into their opening remarks. Candidates will be given three minutes for opening statements. I will then follow up with an additional question for our mayoral candidates before we then focus on our commission candidates. So let us begin today's City of Dayton Mayor Oral and Commission candidate forum. Let's introduce our candidates in the official order which they were drawn. For mayor, candidate Nan Whaley. Also for mayor, A.J. Wagner. Our commissioners, Vineford, Jeffrey Mims, current Joey Williams, David Esrati, and David Greer. And now it's our opening statements from our candidates incorporating our question that you were sent. So, Ms. Whaley, you are first. Mr. Fox, are you ready for the time?
Ready.
Let us begin our forum. Ms. Whaley?
Good afternoon, oh, good morning, almost afternoon. I'm Nan Whaley, Dayton City Commissioner, and I'm asking citizens of Dayton to choose me to be their next mayor. I decided to run for mayor because I thought we needed someone that was really full-time and focused around job creation. To that end, I've put together a plan. It's on my website at nanwhaley.com. It's called "A Roadmap for Dayton's Future." It focuses around job creation, our neighborhoods, and being an open and vibrant community. It's around 11 pages, so in a three-minute time period, I'm not going to have the opportunity to talk about every piece, but I would like to focus around jobs because I think job creation is the key point of what a mayor can really do to move our community and our region forward. To that end, I've talked about in the jobs plan, seven assets from our water resource, our manufacturing, the Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, and our Greater Downtown Plan are some examples of really using these assets to grow and create jobs and being focused on those efforts. I have action items on each one of those inside the plan, talking about how we can really be focused on creating jobs. We've had some good success this past year. I mean, the past, in 2008, the whole state and the country went through a very great recession. I think we've positioned ourselves well to grow jobs and grow our community with our downtown area, with Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, and really focusing on our assets. Specifically with the question at hand, we've done a lot of great work with the Greater Downtown Plan and the great work that Dr. Mike Irvin has led us in. And I would really want to thank the home builders, I was talking to Mr. Hibner earlier, their direction and support in making sure that we really focus on housing in the downtown area has made a big difference and is going to continue to make a large difference for us when we can talk about creating vibrancy in our community. So I think that's a really key point, is something I talk about in the plan. I think we need a mayor who's thinking about the future and truly believes that the future of Dayton can be better than its past. We have a great past, but we have to celebrate and position ourselves to really work on our assets, to grow our community, and to have a strong urban core. It's a pleasure to be here today. I look forward to your questions and thank you for the opportunity to run for mayor.
All right. Thank you, Dan. And let me back up here just a second. I should have read the question that was sent to the candidates before. That's my apologies. Before we move on with Mr. Wagner. The question that the candidates were sent, "The last decade, a new development in housing, retail, and restaurants, both downtown and the corridor along Brown Street. The city has invested millions in infrastructure improvements along Patterson, Brown Street, and Webster Station at the new ballpark and along the river. Meanwhile, many Dayton neighborhoods feel the effects of the budget cutbacks because of that. There's lots able to be mowed. Homeowners and landlords are unresponsive to housing inspection fines, violations, notices, and disinvestment and foreclosure eroding property values. Is Dayton really two cities, one where the investment climate is improving, another that has declined and not yet at bottom? How do you reconcile these two?" That was the question. Since, as we continue now...
That wasn't the question.
That wasn't the question.
Just wanted to make that point.
That wasn't the question.
I was like, "That's a new question."
Think about this question.
Oh, my God. My apologies.
I was like, "Oh, no, I answered the wrong one."
Oh, excuse me. Well, through the planning, let me do read this. "Through the planning and design of buildings, architects shape the public..." Yeah, I am so sorry. Jumped in there. "...private places in which we work and live. Architects share our communities' deep concerns that our homes, neighborhoods, and communities will be safe, healthy, and sustainable. We would like to ask each of you, what are your priorities with respect to issues in this campaign involving the environment, transportation, housing, and growth? And what actions will you take in these areas that will enhance the quality of life for the people of our city?" That, my friends, was the question sent. My apologies. You kind of got a running start of that other one, commissioners. Okay. Mr. Wagner, Mr. Fox, time, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards. You know, I won't have time to answer all those either in three minutes, but I do want to point out a couple of things. Number one is my experience in trying to handle issues for our community. I come to this community, I came to this community almost 40 years ago, 30, over 39 years ago. And since then, I've lived in four Dayton's neighborhoods. I've raised two children with my wife Joan, who's been married to me for 40 years. And I have also had the great honor of being a teacher, an author. I've been a judge. I've been the Montgomery County Auditor. And I've owned my own business, among other things. I worked for the city back early in my career. I was a legislative aide to the Dayton City Commission. And I've also been chair of the Civil Service Board, and I've been a member of the R T A Board as a city representative. So I've got a lot of experience coming into this job, and I intend to use it. And it's necessary. In the last five years, we've lost 9,000 jobs in the city. 9,000. We haven't seen a new job, net new jobs, in over three years now. We haven't seen a gain in over three years. Some stuff comes in, but more is going out. And it's an issue. Trying to understand what that issue is, I've looked at a lot of different things. But it keeps coming back to, when I talk to people, it keeps coming back to how people are treated when they deal with the city. Businesses don't feel respected. Businesses don't feel like they've been honored as an active part of this community like they need to be. Businesses deserve that respect. Four years ago, after N C R walked out of town, I think the city must have realized it, they authorized a study to say, "How's our interface with business going and what can we do to improve it?" It's called "The Matrix Study." Came out with 25 recommendations four years ago. So far, they've fulfilled about four of them. Mostly it's sat on the shelf. Recently, the county commissions asked, "What can we do better in our region to build this region?" And a new study out just last week, the St. Ange Study, L O N G E, that has produced 60 recommendations of what we can do in our community. The roadmap is clear. We've got 20 plus 60. We've got 80 recommendations we can move forward on. And we can make that happen. But we can't let things lie on a shelf, or we're just going to keep time.
Mr. Mims, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jeff Mims. And I guess like A.J., I've probably been in the city probably longer than anyone. Since, I guess since I was two months old. I brought my parents here from Alabama. And I've basically been here ever since. And I've had the experience of living in a variety of places throughout the city of Dayton. Earlier times, not-so-great times, I recall living in people's attics on Mercer Street, people's basements on Adelaide Street, side garages on Home Avenue. And throughout the whole situation, I guess I never knew I was poor. As an only child, and my parents both found gain for employment, and I thought I was the happiest person on earth. I was spoiled to death, too. But, all that being said, I was raised in Dayton with a very, very good, very positive childhood. I've raised, with my ex-wife and I, raised our two children, and both have graduated from the Dayton school system and gone on to do greater things than myself with degrees from Harvard and Howard and Hampton and Antioch. And my daughter has about five different degrees. But I say it to say that this community has produced greatness, not just within my family, but within many of yours as well. And when I look at what we can be, I look back at what we have been at one point in time, being the city of neighbors, being an all-American city, and knowing that we had high-quality recreational programs for children as well as adults. We had high levels of safety throughout our entire community. We had high levels of education. And perhaps some of the drains on those areas have caused people to move from the city. And so as I look back in terms of where we need to go to fulfill the dreams and the vision that many of us have, I'd have to ask some of you even that have moved out of the city and who live in other suburbs that are very prosperous, what types of things are you willing to share with us in terms of advice, in terms of the types of things that you have, that you see, that you value, that would encourage us to move to a point where we can bring more middle-class families back into the city of Dayton? One of the areas that I look at as well, and I could say, I started working on this myself when, maybe some years ago, probably in 1993, with the School Funding Coalition in which I was a member of. And the fact that we brought in the whole issue of school facilities across the entire state and also in Dayton. So my issue again would be is we work to improve new schools and communities that are matched and partnered with that. That was awful quick, three minutes.
Mr. Williams, your three minutes, sir.
We all have timers, too, so we like to start our own timers, too. Okay, great. Thank you. So, thank you very much for having us here today. It's nice to see each other, a good crowd, a big crowd. And I'm excited to speak, particularly since we're talking to a number of architects. I grew up watching The Brady Bunch, so one of my heroes was Mike Brady, my first architect that I got to know. So, it's nice to be here. Again, hi, I'm Joey Williams. I'm a current city commissioner, ready for reelection. Really would like to have your support when it's time for the election, November the 5th. Let me just, I see a lot of familiar faces, but just really quickly, a little bit of background about me. I graduated with a finance degree from Central State University. I have my M B A from Ohio State University. I've been a senior executive in the banking field for about 20 years. I've owned two businesses, and I was voted Business Journals, 40 Under Forty Hall of Fame. What that means is you're no longer under 40s, and you're an agent. And I also was named to Central State University's Alumni Hall of Fame. So, there's a lot more on my background if you get my literature piece, but just want you to know a little bit about me. I've been on the city commission. This is going to be my fourth term. And it's been a really interesting ride. As you all know, we had to deal with the recession. First of all, when we came on, there were a lot of issues around financial matters. But then we had the recession, of course, and things obviously got even worse then. When I say it got worse, it's in terms of the revenue that we received. The revenue that came in obviously went down, and it was very important to have a person on the commission like myself with a financial background to make sure that we managed our finances correctly. And I'm really proud to say that, while other cities around us, like Detroit, 200 miles north, and places like Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, have filed bankruptcy, we've actually had increases in our bond rating. So I'm very proud of that fact. As I look specifically to the question and what we can do to try to help businesses as we move forward, the thing that I talk most about is what we can do to improve crime. Crime issues in our city, in my opinion, stop investors from wanting to invest in our city. When I have my banker hat on and I talk to customers and I talk to prospects and they talk about where they want to locate, one of the major things they talk about is they want to be in an environment where they feel safe. So for the past four years, I have put most of my energy outside of just the things that I'm going to do naturally in terms of the financial side, and I meet with many business leaders. But in terms of as a commissioner, I've been really putting energy to making sure that we can do what we can to have safer streets, places where people want to invest and create jobs. And I think as a commissioner, that's the greatest thing we can do. So with that, I do see the 20-second light. Just want to remind you again, my name is Joey Williams. Please remember me in November. Thank you.
Mr. Esrati, you are next, and your three minutes.
My name is David Esrati, and I, like many of you architects, am a creative professional. I own an advertising agency, graphic design firm. I bought my building for $2,200. That was back in 1988. I saw, I had a vision for South Park. I've been a part of what's happened in South Park. Matt is a neighbor of mine in South Park, and South Park has worked, for the most part, compared to the rest of the city. South Park is growing. It's not growing because we've got great housing stock. It's not growing because of the architecture. It's not growing because of historical guidelines. It's growing because people want to live around the people that we've got in our neighborhood. Neighborhoods, even when we don't have perceived value of, you know, being safe, even though we've had the advantage of having My Valley Hospital fund community-based police officers for a long time, people feel good about the neighborhood. Neighborhoods, people, community, that's what builds a city. You can have all the buildings in the world, but without the people, you don't have a city. And we've had a population loss in the city of Dayton that continues and continues because we're not doing some things right. There's a whole litany of things we can start out with, but I want to talk to you about what I started out with when I ran 20 years ago. Comes down to customer service, and you've got to walk before you can run. Walking before you can run. You've got to be able to cut the grass in your parks, have backboards that are solid, hang basketball nets on the court, and take care of the people that are paying the taxes for those kinds of services. We don't do that very well in the city of Dayton. Instead, we've been on a wild spending spree buying up real estate, like the over $4 million we spent at the corner of Wayne in Wyoming speculating for a Kroger that never came. I don't call that fiscally responsible. Number one, my tax dollars shouldn't be subsidizing Kroger, nor should they be subsidizing General Electric. If General Electric doesn't have a good business reason for being in the city of Dayton, they won't be here. And it shouldn't be because we gave them a 30-year tax abbreak. When I rehabbed my building, I ran into the same problems that all of you ran into. We have a state building code. I don't understand why we have a different building inspector and a different zoning inspector for every jurisdiction. We need to have it at least county-wide. We need to make the process simpler. We also need to look at making Dayton a place where you can try and do new things, from microhousing to cohousing to green building to using recycled materials in new construction. We need to give opportunities to do things differently. And it's that kind of creative change that can start to bring our city back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Greer?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David K. Greer. Born and raised in Dayton, Ohio. I was blessed to retire in 2004 from Wright-Patterson Air Force Base as an information technology customer account representative. I laid off for about a year, and that just wasn't my thing, so I went back to work to where I'm now a transportation coordinator for the Senior Resource Connection. But back in '96, when I moved into the home I presently in, I was talked into joining my neighborhood association. I was a little reluctant at first because I didn't know anyone, but I had a neighbor who was very persistent, and I praised God the sheep, stayed on me to get involved because that allowed me to do what I feel is my calling to do, and that is to help people. So in joining the neighborhood association, I ultimately joined the Northwest Priority Board, where I became the chairman of the Northwest Priority Board in 2005, which I am presently still the chairman of Northwest Priority Board. In every organization and endeavor, there has to be a good foundation. My career working as a federal employee helped to develop a foundation of bureaucracy, protocol, and processes. When I became involved in the community, it allowed me to hone my skills as far as being a people person. Again, being one who cared for people, it gave me the venue to do what I love to do. So in becoming the chairman of the Northwest Priority Board, I interfaced with many residents on a daily basis, hearing their issues, their complaints, and their concerns. And being doable for those individuals through the priority board mechanism, I interfaced with those entities at City Hall and some entities at the county level that also enhanced my ability to learn processes, procedures, and protocol. I always say bureaucracy has its place, but sometimes we can have too much bureaucracy. And sometimes we have a tendency to continue utilizing the same bureaucracy that has been in place for far too long. It becomes antiquated. And because time brings about change, it's not always applicable. So my reason for running for a city commission is so that I can help change our bureaucracy and our processes and procedures from the inside. Because unfortunately, we have a disconnect as far as working the mechanisms from the outside. November the 5th, vote for David K. Greer. Thank you.
All right. Candidates, thank you for your opening statements. And now we'd like to focus on two mayoral candidates. You have two minutes on the clock to answer this question. Glean from your opening comments. Ms. Whaley, you'll go first, and you talked about architects, a roomful of architects, and a roadmap for job creation in the city of Dayton. And your first 100 days as your mayoral priorities, how would you, what moves would you make to foster economic development in Dayton that would propel Dayton down that road to prosperity?
Thank you for the question, Dan. First, you know, regardless of what happens on this election, we're going to have new people on the city commission. And as you know, it's a council-manager form of government, so we talk about making sure that the commission is supportive of the efforts. And so it's really key as mayor to make sure that the commission supports the efforts of a plan that any mayor has. And to that end, when I put the roadmap together, I did check with my colleagues to see if it was something that they could approve, to move forward, and work towards, and they gave me that affirmative. So I think the first thing that we would do is actually set a retreat to really work out a plan that we could work together as a team to really make a difference in job creation and it being the top priority for the commission and for the mayor. Secondly, in the plan, I also talk about a council of entrepreneurships and small business. Small business specifically, I think, is an area that we could really do better with in the city. We do very well with large employers. They are our bread and butter. The CareSource, the Premiers, the Grand Views have a large number of employees, and so they're very important to us. But there's a lot of growth that can be seen through small business. So I would put together what I call a council of entrepreneurs in small business, where they would actually meet with the mayor regularly to really get in touch and deal with the issues that they have at hand, because they're very different than the bigger, larger businesses we have in some of the downtown areas. And I think it will help for the core specifically and in some of our neighborhoods, because those small businesses will grow more jobs, and they'll also create vibrancy in our neighborhoods and in our downtown.
Mr. Wagner, you mentioned 9,000 jobs lost. You also mentioned to me that you feel sometimes like in Dayton we're reshuffling the decks on the Titanic, people, businesses poaching from other businesses. Many, as the Business Reporter channel too, many of the businesses that I talk to feel that, as Ms. Whaley calls it, "The bread and butter," the existing businesses that are here are not being taken care of, are not being, you know, being served. The clients of the city are not being served. The city doesn't spend enough time talking to those clients. What would you do to have better creation between, better communication between the clients and the city?
That's why it's a little bit puzzling to me that the city's already done the study, and it's been sitting on a shelf for almost four years, that the study is called "The Matrix Study," I mentioned earlier. It's got 25 great recommendations in it to improve the interface with businesses, and yet we're not doing it. I'd also like to change the culture by bringing in someone in top management who is a businessperson, not a bureaucrat, not from another city, but from a business, who understands business, talks the language of business, understands what businesses need and want and have to have in order to relocate here or to grow here. We need somebody like that. We need somebody trained in customer service who can do training in customer service so that we know that when we do have that interface, that it's a positive experience for everyone, so that people will want to come here. We need those kinds of things. We need to have a nonprofit like Cincinnati has for Over the Rhine, a development nonprofit that I already belong to one that were for me, and I hope to have, we hope to have that up and running before I become mayor. And that nonprofit will get involved in development in the city with a lot of private business sector folks who are willing to bring money to the city if they feel the city's treating them fairly. We are in need of getting politics out of this whole operation. There was a desire by the hospital, Grand View Hospital, to expand. They had gained a lot of money. They had gotten support from Congressman Turner. And the neighborhood leaders were encouraged by it because they wanted to help the neighborhoods as well. But that thing was next because the city would not cooperate. As Commissioner Whaley told the neighborhood leaders, "We don't do Mike Turner projects. Politics has to be left alone."
Okay. A second question for our mayoral candidates. Make sure I get the right one. If you had a blank check and could champion one new infrastructure or building project in the city, what would it be and why? Ms. Whaley, you're first. If you had a blank check and could champion one new infrastructure or building project in the city, what would it be and why?
I'm sorry, who's first?
Yours.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think it's... A blank check? For real?
Hard to believe, right?
Well, if it's a blank check, I'd go for the arcade, you know, frankly. I mean, the problem with it is, is that there's not enough private sector money to really to do something with that center of downtown that would really make a big difference. And I think that's one. There's also, I mean, if you're asking for blank checks, you know, the infrastructure work that we've done with 7075 is key for the region. It's really hard for you to have a question like that because quite frankly, when you're in government and when you have leadership, you don't get blank checks. And so it's not, it's not something that we can really even do. We can vision, we can work within our restraints, but to tell the community that you would do a project because you had a blank check, it just doesn't exist in this community.
Your dreams and vision? Your dreams and vision if you had a blank check? What would it be? What's on your wish list?
Well, I mean, I think the key, I think the key development for the whole region is actually along the river. And so, you know, to that effect, you know, we started what we call the Ohio's Great Corridor, and we work along the rivers. Each city and each community coming together all the way from Pickwood down to Fairfield and really trying to design and think about our communities as connected along the river. I think it's key for not only the city, but for the whole region. That's, I think, a really key part for us.
Okay. Ms. Whaley? Do you need the question again? You got the blank check part, right?
I got the blank check. For sure, I got the blank check, yeah. I love it. You know, one of the things, one of the problems I think that we have is we invest a lot in infrastructure. We've got some nice amenities in the city. It's really a very nice city. It's a very good-looking city in its structure and its cleanliness, et cetera. and it, and it's structure and it's cleanliness, et cetera. The problem is, we're not getting it marketed effectively. Uh I would spend the money, quite honestly, on marketing. I would take the, I would love to take uh what we've got and, and find a way to market it to other communities or other businesses around the country. Uh we've got some tremendous arts. We've got some tremendous livability potions. You know, you can't beat the commute in this town. It's one of the shortest commutes you could possibly have. And that creates a great place for people to live and raise their kids. The only problem is, we have the amenities, we have the rivers, we have the, we've had them for a long, long time now. We have uh the bike lanes, we have uh the parks, uh we have some wonderful things, but we don't have the people. People are still leaving. And I fear that part of the reason is we feel we can build it and they will come. But that's not so. You build it and then you have to market it. You have to get out there and hustle.
All right, thank you. And you can take a break now, Ms. Whaley. Mr. Wagner, relax. As we're now gonna focus a bit on our commission candidates. Again, order was determined by a drawing prior to our forum and you do have two minutes to answer the following question. Kinda gave you a preview here, obviously, a little bit early, but let me read it again.
We get the blank check, right?
No blank check on this question, sir. All right, the commissioner candidate question is, "The last decade has seen new development in housing, retail and restaurants, both downtown and in the corridor along Brown Street. The city has invested millions in infrastructure improvements along Patterson Boulevard, Brown Street and in Webster Station, and of course, the new ballpark along the river. Meanwhile, many Dayton neighborhoods feel the effects of budget cutbacks because vacant lots aren't able to be mowed. Homeowners and landlords are unresponsive to housing inspection fines and violation notices and disinvestment and foreclosure are eroding property values. Is Dayton really two cities? One where the investment climate is improving and another that is in decline and not yet at bottom? How do you reconcile these two conditions?" And we begin with Mr. Mims. Two minutes, sir.
Thank you. And I don't have a blank check again? So uh the uh, the two cities, I think, is, is real. We have a um, it's simply a significant amount of um our citizens who are below or at or below the, the property level. And we, we find it economy, if we, if you will, in terms of how can we create the kind of situation in this city that makes everyone feel like they're valued and like they're making a contribution and/or have a high quality set of life opportunities in their own vision for both themselves and their families. And that's a, that's a real struggle right now with the job losses and things that we've experienced. Uh because, you know, we were uh about five years ago at the height of the foreclosure crisis, probably forty-ninth in terms of job creation, one in terms of job loss, also one in terms of foreclosures as far as Montgomery County and this region was concerned. The issue in terms of how we create and make those situations work for us all has to be centered around the kinds of values that people see. Uh safety is a key area. And belonging into the neighborhood, feeling that that neighborhood belongs to you, I think is paramount to something that we started uh when we did the school facilities uh piece and built new schools in uh throughout Ohio and also throughout the city of Dayton. Those areas and those opportunities in which many of you were involved in as architects, we found that in each of those communities, the value of those homes went up. Now, there's some other things that we're suffering from still. The remnants of DSEG and uh at any two-block area, you have children going to uh some thirty-five, forty different schools, which makes no sense whatsoever. That when we begin to centralize and have neighborhoods where you have a neighborhood school and you have the ownership in the community, then the blight and keep upkeep of the neighborhood and vacant properties is at a higher level than it currently is. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Just read the question one more time.
You bet.
This will be our third time.
"The last decade has seen new development in housing, retail and restaurants, both downtown and corridor along Brown Street. The city has invested millions in infrastructure improvements along Patterson, Brown Street and Webster Station and the new ballpark along the river. Meanwhile, many Dayton neighborhoods feel the effects of budget cutbacks because vacant lots aren't able to be mowed. Homeowners and landlords are unresponsive to housing inspection fines and violation notices and disinvestment and foreclosure are eroding property values. The question, is Dayton really two cities? One where the investment climate is improving and another that is in decline and not yet at bottom? And how do you reconcile these two conditions?"
Okay, I just wanna make sure that you mentioned Brown Street in the question. Um you know, I don't, I don't know if I would say it's um two cities. I would definitely say that certainly there's a lot of investment going on downtown. Downtown investment is obviously um on the uptick. Uh but there has been investment within the neighborhoods. I asked, I wanted to see Brown because I was gonna mention the Genesis Project uh around Miami Valley Hospital. I think you mentioned that in the question. But there, there's been other places also, like around Good Samaritan Hospital, the Phoenix Project. That has really helped the neighborhood around the Phoenix Project. Uh we've had our Rexplex go up um at the old Roosevelt site. And we're starting to see housing go up and around the, the new Roosevelt site. So we're starting to see development there. And then there's the ongoing with Grandview High Hospital, a project called DaVinci. Hasn't really gotten to where we wanted to go, but we're working on trying to move that project now. So I think the city is certainly working hard to try to have investment within the neighborhoods. But I think the greater investment within the neighborhood is gonna happen when, again, we get back to what can we do as a city to, to try to make our city a safer place, a cleaner place, a place where people feel comfortable and investors want to invest. Uh I talk to people and they, they talk about wanting to invest in the city outside those areas that have been mentioned. Um but the issue comes up is we wanna make sure those areas are safe. So again, that's where I'm spending my time and attention, is making sure that we have safe streets along with whenever we can partner with good partners like uh Miami Valley Hospital, Good Samaritan, Grandview Hospital. We're doing that also. Thank you.
Mr. Israni?
I took a walk down Mia Avenue the other day, knocking on doors. First, I've been on Tyson, next street over. Tyson, there were maybe two boarded up houses, empty houses. Mia, whole nother story. Either one out of three or at least half boarded up, vacated, arson, sitting there, some needing to be demolished. We have a real problem. Now, there's a lot of focus from some of the commissioners and in the past commission on spending sixty million dollars tearing down all these structures, these problem structures. I don't believe in spending sixty million dollars to tear down something. I don't believe you build a city by tearing it down. I believe you build a city by investing in things that make it a better place to live, um make it more secure. And yes, I understand that a house that's, you know, falling down is making the neighborhood less secure. But we took our eye off the ball a long time ago. We stopped focusing on police. Our police force is half of what it was when I ran twenty years ago. We've stopped focusing on community-based initiatives while we've done an awful lot of big projects that were supposed to solve everything, everything from Courthouse Square to the fountains that we don't turn on very much anymore. And we don't have, and that's the problem. We've gotta get back to focusing on delivering services to our community, all of our community. Downtown, they complain that the, the street sweepers go every night. We're lucky if we see them three times a year, twice a year in our neighborhood. And when they do, they don't do a very good job. So we have to refocus back into the community. And we have to look at how to make things more secure. And one of the, I'd, instead of buying up land and solve and uh the rest and, and this land bank and other things, investing in real estate, I'd rather invest in keeping the people in the houses so that they don't end up getting gutted, have their copper stolen and the wire stolen and, and losing all value. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greer?
Some associated principles uh are reflective of it being two cities. Uh that is based on the fact that we have uh the issue of, of the lack of enforcement as far as our housing code. The combination that our housing stock is old. And also, given consideration to the fact that we have an elderly population. Uh those elderly are on fixed incomes. And the fact that the housing codes were not enforced as they should have been years ago. Those elderly are in a situation to now repair those uh, those homes that, that are old as far as the stock is concerned. They don't have the money to do it, you know. So that contributes to a, a lot of our, our housing stock becoming uh uninhabitable, contributes to the vacant lots that we have. You know, so uh you look at these projects that are geared towards uh what is deemed major stakeholders. Uh these projects that are, are building up around the, the three major hospitals in the city of Dayton. And there's, there's many of uh dollars that are being allocated uh for those areas. Uh but what about the residential areas? What about those houses that have elderly families in them that do not have the money to bring them up to code out in the residence? So you, you wonder, is it two cities to a degree? Yes, it is. You know, we have to develop a mechanism for helping those residents as well. Understanding the concept as far as uh building up the downtown area and building up around the major stakeholders of our hospitals, uh you still have to be cognizant of what exists.
All right, thank you, candidates. Now we'd like to ask one question as time allows here from our audience. And now each candidate, you'll have two minutes to answer this. If you like, this is optional. And I'm gonna kinda do a random order. Whoever wants to jump in here first. Uh the question from the audience is, "What are your views on countywide government and verify the system in place today?" All right? What are your views on countywide government and verify the system in place today? Whoever wants to jump in first, answer this, please. If you have an opportunity.
Um if you, you, you look at the data associated with uh regional government, uh you have to uh consider that uh the federal government went uh global years ago. Uh is it inevitable for it to become regionalized? Well, taking into consideration the competition that's between our, our villages, our townships, our cities, you know, uh it creates a, I believe it creates a, a stagnant, stagnation towards growth because of that competition. We're vying for the same uh opportunities. We're vying for the same investments. And if you look at a regional type government, uh the propensity to create and to deliver those services on a, in larger scale but equitably, you know, uh exist. So I think that it's worth looking at, but you have to have a buy-in from the citizens, all citizens, before you move towards it.
Mr. Mims, next.
Yes, um I've um, I've, I've functioned for, I don't know, maybe the last year or so on the Montgomery County Ohio. Um uh I guess group that's working with, looking at those regional ser- services and then looked at different cities across the nation that I guess have some similar potential to Dayton. And there are obvious benefits. There are obvious benefits. We used to fire and um utilities, uh tax base, you know, you can go on and on with some of the potential that we have. The attitude adjustment has got to be something that we look at and embrace in this entire community to see whether or not the services that we can benefit from are such that they would be embraced by citizens. You know, one, one prime example, again, of looking at, as far back as eighty-eight, when there was a look at trying to consolidate six hundred and twelve school districts in Ohio to something small and more manageable. Some school districts having only a hundred kids or two hundred kids, which was a tremendous overhead cost. But that's never been realized even to this point in time. We're looking at some twenty-five, some years ago or later. So when we look at the benefits that we have in terms of transportation, we have a great countywide transportation system. Uh we have a great water resource. We have a great higher air system uh that we have and a tremendous opportunity for development. We look at the river. Uh someone mentioned earlier about different codes in different cities. I mean, there's tremendous benefit from looking at those things that will benefit and facilitate growth that will bring additional dollars to this particular community. And one major issue is the political process. When we have politicians who are working together to improve the region, I think it puts all of us in a much better position.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I'd love to. Um I think, so my view on this question is really simple. I think the answer is complex. My, my view is simply that if we continue to do things the way we're doing, doing it now, uh the city of Dayton and this region are, are headed for big trouble. You know, a lot of times people talk about a shrinking middle class. I think when you think about um this country, there's a shrinking middle cities also. Uh the number of true middle cities in this country are, are shrinking. Just look around. Um and so we're gonna have to do something different. And so I am a member of a group called One Dayton and we've been studying this issue for really a couple of years now. And we just announced last week here at the Engineers Club, in fact, that uh we're gonna go out and we wanna have public conversations with folks to find out, um is there a better way? Is there something that would, that they would find more attractive? Um and we're talking about everything from continuing some of the things we do in terms of shared services. There's a lot of shared services already going on. Um the city of Dayton provides trash pickup for Jefferson Township. That's pretty simple. We're talking about things like that all the way to as far out as having one unified government in Montgomery County. So we're trying to talk about all those different things. We need to bring it before the people. It's not something that should be done in a smoke-filled room quietly. Uh 'cause for one reason, you can't. You have to come before the, the voters and get approval. But we wanna talk to the community and find out what are the different, and there's about three or four different options at least that you can do. So we're, we're having this conversation. You'll hear certainly more about it in two thousand and fourteen. We're going through the fundraising process now, but I firmly believe we've gotta look at this closely and we've gotta do something different.
Mr. Wagner, I believe you are next.
Yeah, uh thirty years ago, thirty-plus years ago probably, I was on a committee with, uh Chuck Corn was heading up a, a committee to look at whether we could become one government here in Montgomery County. And um we had several meetings, but then we kinda gave up because I, I think we realized that politically it just wasn't feasible or viable. Um uh it's been revived and I'm glad it's been revived because I really do want it to happen. I, I think it's a good thing. I think it would be even better, but you gotta take it a step at a time, if eventually we get it out to Beaver Creek and Tip City and Springbrough and include uh the true region that, that Dayton is. Um the um obstacles are great though and, and, and I think in the meantime, though we've gotta adopt an attitude of regionalism, that is that we will work together, that we will work uh on projects. You know, if, if somebody wants to locate a business in Riverside, I'm all for it. Yeah, that, that brings, that, that supports my parks, it supports our Schuster, it supports Fifth Third Field, it supports Sinclair College. It, it does wonderful things for the city of Dayton. Uh and, and about ten of the hundred jobs will go uh to citizens here in the city of Dayton and we need those jobs. So if, if somebody wants to come to this uh region and wants to locate a business, of course, I'm gonna cheer for Dayton first. But if Dayton doesn't have what they need, I'm happy to recommend Kettering. I'm happy to recommend West Carrollton. I want business to come here. And we have to have a regional attitude or businesses will find us fighting and will walk away.
I really wanna commend Commissioner Williams' work on, on his passion on One Dayton. He's been working on it, I think, for about four, three or four years now. And uh I think we have a lot of spirited conversation about it. One of the concerns I have overall about the regional conversation is it always comes down to service delivery. And I think the conversation should really be about growing the pie and how we make sure that when a business goes to Kettering or when a business comes to downtown Dayton, that all the communities around us thrive from that. And I think that's where the conversation needs to go. Cities and communities that have done this have had more success when it's about that. If we're going to start the conversation about saving money through services, we'll find that we don't save very much money and then the incentive to keep everything the same will stay at status quo. So I think the real key in this conversation is about the income tax uh across the county and hopefully even three counties. It's a much harder conversation to have. It will take longer. It will take leadership. It will take a lot of work. But it will be more fruitful in the end for the whole community.
I don't know why we're stuck with a law from seventeen eighty-five, but the Northwest Ordinance is kind of archaic at this point. When I first moved to Dayton, I lived in Mad River Township. I had no idea what a township was. Made no sense. It's now Riverside. This idea of urban townships makes no sense. The little pockets of no income tax, except of course at Austin Landing where we have the white collar people not paying any income tax, but the blue collar people. where we have the white collar people not paying any income tax, but the blue collar people paying any income tax, which I think is seriously questionable. And we're not going to see any regionalization, if you want the real truth, until Dayton gets its act together. Because that's the number one thing that scares people. They don't want to be a part of what they perceive to be the city of Dayton, which started its decline due to racism and busing. It's historical, it's not going to go away. And what we did is we replaced racial segregation with economic segregation. We know what the process is. I'm not talking to a bunch of fools here. You guys understand how cities grow. But at some point, we have to look at, we can't keep sprawling. We can't keep building new office buildings while we've got vacant office buildings. Somewhere at a point, we have to put into some place some things that are going to stop unbridled growth because it's not sustainable. We have to say, if you want to build new housing, you have to take some of the housing down. You want to build new office space, you have to adapt it, you have to change it. And we also have to get rid of all these jurisdictions. If Kettering was the largest jurisdiction in this, in this region, I think there'd be a lot more of a move to regionalization because Kettering, in my estimation, does a whole lot of things right. They've got a great Parks and Rec program. They do a great job of police. They do a great job of safety. The community should be very proud of itself. If that was the benchmark for all, we'd be okay. But even then, they've been trapped too because of inequitable funding arrangements put in place that are, we found are unconstitutional schools and everything else.
All right, candidates, thank you, audience, thank you for the question. We do appreciate that. And thank you for coming today. As we kind of draw down here, we'd like to uh, wrap up our candidates forum with closing statements now from our candidates. Again, this reverse order now from our opening statements. So we're two minutes, so we have two minutes for your closing statements. And we begin with Mr. Greer.
What I would like to first say is thank you for the opportunity to share with you uh, my vision for becoming a, a city of Dayton commissioner. Uh, I have had a lot of experience of working with uh, our government infrastructure. And it's, it's a decent infrastructure, but it has its, its, its uh, shortcomings. And I say that because we utilize uh, some antiquated methodologies based on a charter that was drawn up in nineteen thirty-seven. Uh, people's mindsets have changed. There's been so much change as far as uh, what we have to do as far as establishing the quality of life factors. There's a, a lot of things that divide us. So we have to change our mindsets. There has to be the components of, of visibility, exposure and accountability. And that's not just for our city officials. That's for all of us. That's for the residents and citizens as well. They have to take ownership for their neighborhoods, for the community. Our elected officials have to take ownership for coming up with the policies in order to operate the, the government infrastructure in order for us all to prosper. So again, on November the fifth, uh, I would deeply appreciate you considering me as a city of Dayton commissioner. Thank you very much.
Mr. Israani?
We have to innovate our way through this. And we're going to have to do it rather quickly. I don't think we have a ton of time before things pass us by. If you've seen the growth down at Austin Landing around the green, there's been huge effort to move away from our city core. People say that the change with I seventy-five and exit ramps is going to have a lasting impact and make it hard for people to get downtown. There are all kinds of things that we're facing. But more than anything, we have to do things that make it easier for people to invest, easier to actually make money when they invest, make them feel good about their investment, make them feel good about their community. That means we need wins. And we need wins at all levels. It's not about these silver bullet projects. I think that's been the, the focus for a long time and I think some of people have made a lot of money off of it. But I think that we have to look at everything, including how much money does it take to run for political office? Frankly, I was disgusted in the primary with the, the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that was spent in the mayoral primary to get seventy-five hundred votes. So instead of buying yard signs, I went and bought basketball nets and I started hanging them up. I've hung over two hundred and forty basketball nets in the city, making sure our kids have a place to play. I put up three rims that have been donated by people. I have cleared courts of broken glass, weeds and debris. I've been out in the community because I think that ten thousand dollars should be enough to run for office because it should be about the power of your ideas, the substance of your campaign and your track record of what you've done in your community. Where I've rehabbed five properties, I've run a business for twenty-three years. And I've been through the struggles in South Park and I was the president and brought the neighborhood back together after some very decisive moments. I'm a veteran, I'm a small business owner. I'm a person who does things differently. And I think it's time to have an open, honest commission unfettered by political payoff and so that we can get forward, starting with focusing on the people first. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Williams, your closing statement?
Hi, uh, thank you for listening. Again, my name's Joey Williams and I do ask for your support. Um, you know, I think, you know, you've had an opportunity to hear some pretty good questions and I hope you had an opportunity to compare to candidates. I hope you walk away understanding that, um, at least from my perspective, I like to think that I do bring a, a strong business background, a business component to the city commission. And uh, we're going to be listening and talking to business folks moving forward to try to continue to have the city to grow. And I'm pretty proud of some of the things we've been able to accomplish recently, you know? Uh, having Midmark move to the city, having um, a general electorate, uh, what we're doing here with the Riverfront Project. Um, there, there are things that are moving, uh, but we need to do more, that's clear. No one here thinks that we've done enough. And so I just want to ask for your support and understand that if I'm elected, I'm going to continue to work hard to try to improve our, our job situation, our safety situation. And I want to make it better for all you guys and all of us who have a vested interest in seeing a strong business climate. Thank you.
Mr. Mims?
Hi, thank you. Again, uh, Jeffrey Mims. I have more than forty years of uh, service to my community, to my country. Uh, I'm a Vietnam vet. Uh, additionally, I served as the Director of Government Relations in the, in the city, city school system for more than twenty-five years. And throughout the variety of years, been involved in some significant, uh, even if you want to call them economic growth factors, uh, as far as the school facilities piece is concerned. Two of my greatest assets are, one in terms of strong advocacy and the other in terms of my collaborative skills. Because nothing happens with one individual. And I've been able to be elected uh, for a variety of positions. I'm currently on the state school board. Uh, prior to that, I was president of the Dayton School Board. And some time ago, I was also president of the State Dayton Teacher Union. And all those issues brought with them the responsibility of leadership, not just the position of leadership. And as we look at where we need to go, there's no way you can make anything happen regardless of what the dreams, desires, aspirations that you have, unless you have a group of individuals who are willing to work with you to make those type of things happen. So when we look down the road with the challenges that we have before us, you know, I am a very familiar person because I've been involved with this process, with these processes for a number of years. And I've had success for a number of years primarily because of hard work and collaboration. On November fifth, remember the name Jeffrey Mims, Jeffrey J. Mims Jr. I don't want to leave that out. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you and uh, thank you, Mr. Edward, for hosting and moderating this. Thank you to the organizations who've hosted us and thank you all for being here. And thanks to the candidates for putting themselves out here for our city. I uh, was born into poverty. I'm one of eighteen children and uh, one mom, one dad, one at a time. And uh, I, I never could have dreamed uh, of having the life that I've had, of having the opportunities to be an attorney, to, to be a judge, to be a county auditor, to be a elected official. I, I feel like the man who's been given ten talents and um, I'm blessed to have them. But now I have to invest them. Now I have to do something with them. I'm not going to bury them. We're going to invest them in this community that's brought me along and brought my family along. And I hope that uh, I can prove myself over the next four years and uh, you'll be happy with the results.
Candace Whelan?
I want to thank the organizers of the debate and specifically want to thank uh, the Barn Yarn Gang that's here. I was supposed to speak with them and I had a scheduling conflict and their flexibility, it means a lot that they would be willing to come forward and appreciate the organizers for allowing them to come forward and listen to the debate today, to the forum, forum today. Uh, over the past nine months running for mayor and even before when I was deciding, uh, I had a lot of conversations and probably have had conversations with thousands of Daytonians and people in the Dayton region. And uh, why to run for mayor? And really, it came down um, to the question of leadership over and over again for this community. Uh, one of the people I like to, I talk about a lot that I talked to, who's a good friend of mine, is former city commissioner Mark Henry. Uh, Mark and I were elected to the commission at the same age. Uh, and so he's, he's helped me through these past years. But he said, you know, the mayor of Dayton should matter. And I thought that was a pretty profound but easy statement because I think the mayor of Dayton does matter. You know, it matters to families that want strong neighborhoods where they feel that they're, they can raise a family and be safe. It matters to business owners who believe that if they play by the rules, work hard, that they can be a success. It matter, it matters to me, you know, who came to this community uh, was welcomed so lovingly, met my husband here, bought my first home here and want to live the rest of my life here. So because it matters and because I believe in the future of this community and believe that its future can be stronger than its fantastic past, I'm asking for your support and asking for your commitment to this community on November fifth. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's thank our candidates. Appreciate your service, your candor and your passion for this city. And all this, all these, thank you for sharing your lunchtime with us. We do appreciate it. Hope you had a, a better understanding of where our candidates stand on some of these important issues facing our community. And thanks to our civic-minded sponsors today who worked very hard to provide today's city of Dayton mayoral and commission candidates forum. A round of applause if you would, please for our host, AIA Dayton, a chapter of the American Institute of Architects, please. As well as Associated General Contractors of Dayton and the Home Builders Association of Dayton. A round of applause. We want to thank our staff here at the Engineers Club of Dayton, Darby, Kate and her staff. And I believe Ben Graham, who is the Engineer's Science Hall of Fame Chairman. If you'll please come forward real quick because I know you've got a captive audience here that you, do you enjoy this Engineers Club as much as I do? Is this beautiful to have this person?
Yes, uh, captive audience, I'd like to share with you, uh, those of you who are interested in technology. A part of our Engineers Club is what's called the Engineering and Science Hall of Fame. We induct people from all over mostly North America. And we will have an induction on the fourteenth of November. Uh, coming to Dayton will be Martin Cooper from California, who invented the cellphone, which has certainly changed a lot of lives. Uh, coming from southeastern Ohio is a fellow less known because his field isn't public like cellphones, but a fellow by the name of Sung Lee, who is one of the world leaders in alternative fuel uh, development. And finally, we'll be inducting somebody who has changed the life of every person in this room to the extent that you're Daytonians. Uh, we're inducting one deceased uh, entrant and that is Arthur Morgan. Arthur Morgan, who changed Dayton from one of the most flood-prone areas in the world to one of the least flood-prone areas in the world. And he'll be represented by grandson who is coming in from Minnesota. So if you're interested in or have uh, friends, children, grandchildren, whatever, who'd be interested in this technology and meeting these people, uh, the uh, circle the fourteenth of November. And if you want further information, I'll give you my own phone number. You can jot it down. It's nine three seven, six eight nine, three three eight oh. And uh, welcome to our Engineers Club. And by the way, I heard a number of the candidates use the word entrepreneur. And uh, we have what we call our Entrepreneur Night. The third Thursday evening of every month. And our pub is just busting with people who are the entrepreneurs, young entrepreneurs of Dayton.
All right, Mr. Graham, thank you. Round of applause to Mr. Graham. This beautiful Engineers Club.